Good evening, everyone. This is the Village of Ridgewood Village Council Regular Public Meeting, March 12, 2025. The time is now 7:30. Let's call this meeting to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule including the date and time of this meeting.
Roll call. Councilmember Mortimer?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Winograd and Mayor Vagianos are absent.
Please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I move the bills, claims, and vouchers and statement of funds on hand as of February 28th, 2025 be accepted as submitted.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White?
Yes.
I move that the village council minutes of January 22nd, January 29th, and February 5th, having been reviewed by the village council and now available in the village clerk's office, be approved as submitted.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to step down to the well at this point.
Do you read it first?
No, usually I read it from there at the handheld.
We're going to change the order here a little bit for tonight, and I'm going to go first with the proclamation for, now I've got my order mixed up, World Down Syndrome today. And members of the audience, could you come up if you're here for World Down Syndrome Come stand up over here. Yeah. Okay, we have Diana Stolfo and her partner Matt, I forget your last name.
Arnold.
Arnold. Okay, Matt Arnold and Diana Stolfo. Whereas Down Syndrome, a condition in which a person has an extra 21st chromosome, also referred to as trisomy 21, annually affects about 6,000 babies in the United States and about one in every 700 births. And whereas Down Syndrome is a lifelong condition with no known cause resulting in varying degrees of intellectual and physical disability and associated medical issues. And whereas providing services early in life will often help babies and children with Down Syndrome improve their physical and intellectual abilities and develop their full potential. And whereas people with Down Syndrome have an inherent right to be accepted and included as valued and equal members of the community. Whereas the United Nations General Assembly declared March 21st World Down Syndrome Day in 2012 to raise global awareness of Down Syndrome. And whereas this year's theme for World Down Syndrome Day is Improve Our Support Systems. Because support is a key human right that makes other rights possible, and those with Down Syndrome have the right to support that meets their needs for choice, control, and dignity. And whereas Ridgewood supports and celebrates the efforts and initiatives of organizations working to ensure people with Down Syndrome have adequate services, are valued by society, and can lead fulfilling and productive lives in our community. And whereas the date for World Down Syndrome Day, March 21st, is significant in its representation of the triplication, trisomy, of the 21st chromosome, and spreading awareness about Down Syndrome and promoting inclusion is the best way to celebrate. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim March 21st, 2025, as World Down Syndrome Day in the Village of Ridgewood, New Jersey, and urges our residents to educate themselves about Down Syndrome and to commit to improve our support systems. And I do want to say that Diana and Matt are productive members of our community and have been for decades, and I really appreciate it. Thank you, and this is for you. Did you want to say something?
Well, thank you to the Village of Ridgewood, to honoring the proclamation issue for World Down Syndrome Day, so thank you.
Thank you so much for having you do, for Down Syndrome Day.
So, very good.
Would you like a picture?
Oh, that's good. Okay, just a moment.
Thank you.
Whereas Congress designated the third week, the third full week in March to be National Poison Prevention Week in 1961, and since then, this week has helped to raise national awareness of the dangers of potential dangerous medicines, household products and chemicals, environmental contaminants, and other substances. And whereas this year's theme is, when the unexpected happens, Poison Help is here for you 24/7, whether you have a general question or an emergency. Poison Help is available at no cost to you. And whereas during National Poison Prevention Week, also signified by hashtag NPPW, poison centers across the country will focus the public's attention on the free lifesaving services provided by poison centers, as well as educating the public on ways to prevent poison exposures. And whereas the New Jersey Poison Control Center, a division of the Department of Emergency Medicine at Rutgers, New Jersey Medical School, provides 24/7 expert medical treatment, advice, drug information, and prevention education at no cost to the public through the Poison Help Hotline. And whereas the New Jersey Poison Control Center's services save healthcare dollars by eliminating thousands of unnecessary emergency room visits and results in shorter lengths of stay for patients hospitalized for poisoning. And whereas the New Jersey Poison Control Center is instrumental in the surveillance and management of poisoning exposures across the state, including the use, misuse, and abuse of medications, legal and illicit drugs, environmental contaminants, bioterrorism agents, and common household products and chemicals. And whereas the New Jersey Poison Control Center is involved in New Jersey's efforts in homeland defense, counterterrorism, emergency preparedness, pandemic response, and biosurveillance. And whereas today, poisoning remains the leading cause of injury-related death in the U.S., more people die of poisoning every day than gun or car-related injuries. And whereas most reported poison exposures involve children five years old and younger, most poisoning deaths occur in adults aged 20 to 59. And whereas overdose deaths from prescription opioids, over-the-counter medications, and illegal drugs remain at epidemic proportions for both New Jersey and the United States, while lead exposure and carbon monoxide poisoning remain major public health concerns. And whereas poison center experts encourage the public not to guess, wait for symptoms, or waste time looking up medical treatment online when potential poisoning exposures occur, instead call 1-800-222-1222, or text 973-339-0702, or chat by going to www.njpies.org. And whereas all residents should save the Poison Help Hotline in their cell, home, and office phones, because a fast response can make all the difference in preventing serious injury and saving lives. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village council of the Village of Ridgewood do hereby proclaim March 16th to the 22nd, 2025, as National Poison Prevention Week in New Jersey, and encourages all residents to pledge their commitment to ensuring the safety of themselves, their families, and their community.
Thank you. Councilman White?
Great. A proclamation about World Autism Day. So whereas autism, a neurodevelopmental lifelong condition which affects the way a person communicates and relates to people and the world around them, manifests during early childhood and currently affects 1 in 36 children in the United States. And whereas autism is defined by persistent differences in social communication and social interaction, repetitive patterns of behavior, interests or activities with sometimes cause clinically significant impairment in social, occupational, or other areas of daily functioning. And whereas there is no known cause of autism, however, several potential factors are known, including genetic and environmental. And whereas autism exists on a spectrum, meaning each person experiences autism in a different way, and the support they need can vary. And whereas autism is a type of neurodivergence, meaning a person's brain may process information differently than non-autistic or neurotypical people. And whereas autism has no cultural boundaries existing in all cultures, ethnicities, races, and gender identities. And whereas in 2007, the United Nations General Assembly unanimously adopted a resolution declaring April 2nd World Autism Awareness Day to highlight the need to help improve the lives of children and adults with the condition so that they can lead full and meaningful lives. And whereas autistic people continue to face obstacles when seeking employment, healthcare, education, and housing, and the immense contributions of autistic people are often overlooked. And whereas World Autism Awareness Day celebrates the achievements of neurodivergent people everywhere and champions for the equal rights and dignity of all those living on the autism spectrum, now forebe it resolved that the village council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2025, as World Autism Awareness Day in the Village of Ridgewood, and urges our residents to learn more about autism, improve early diagnoses, and to build more welcoming and inclusive communities to support autistic people.
Thank you. We'll go now to public comment, limited to three minutes per person with a cap of 40 minutes. Anybody want to come up to the podium to speak? Please give your name and residency.
I'm speaking Anne Loving, Ridgewood resident. I'm a Perrin.
Anne, you need to get closer to the mic.
No.
Okay.
Anne Loving, Ridgewood resident. I was happy to hear that agents of bioterror were included in your proclamation that Councilman Mortimer read about Poison Prevention Week. One agent of bioterror is Clostridium botulinum, and the botulism toxin is one of the most powerful, dangerous toxins known to man. One purified gram is enough to kill eight million people, so if you do the math, one eight-millionth of a gram is technically enough to kill a person. The reason I bring that up is because not everybody knows that honey is a source of botulism for infants, and that's why many of you may have heard that no child under the age of one year should have honey because of the possibility, not a strong possibility, but a deadly possibility, that spores of this organism could be in the honey. In that case, the toxin is not produced in the honey, it's produced in the infant's gut. And I'm just mentioning that because not all honey bottles have such a warning on it, and even though your pediatrician will tell you, and maybe other new parents will tell you, not every honey bottle says that. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
You can just go up, just walk up.
Yeah, you can just go ahead. And just state your name, and remember to hold the mic close to your mouth, because otherwise it won't pick up what you're saying. And your residency also, please.
Hi, my name is Cindy Chang-Nasser of Ridgewood.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Cindy, and I'm a Ridgewood Crew Mom. I would like to take this opportunity to announce that on Saturday, March 22nd, from 10 to 1 o'clock, Ridgewood Crew will be hosting our annual Row-a-thon at the Van Ness Park in the middle of our beautiful downtown. This is an exciting event where our rowers will help raise funds for the team and showcase their favorite sports. This is also the second year that we will be having a competition between our local firefighters and the police force to see who will take home the title of the strongest first responder. So please come and cheer on your favorite local hero. Come and meet our team, see what the sport of rowing is all about, try out the erging machines, pick up a delicious treat at our much anticipated bake sale. And for those who have generously donated to the fundraiser and have these wonderful crew cash, please come and use them at the Row-a-thon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. It sounds like fun.
Cynthia O'Keefe, Ridgewood resident. So I just wanted to address a few points from last week's meeting. There were a couple of things that Shabon said, and unfortunately she's not here tonight, but she did say that the only question that's a bad question is one that goes unanswered. And I do agree with that. That had to do with Matrix and the box that was checked that caused all kinds of commotion last week, which is now, you know, considered water under the bridge. But, you know, I think it would have been easier if people from the public and who have expressed a question on more than one occasion, because that was the second time I brought it up. If, you know, you all have my email address, all it would have taken would be a simple email saying, "I sent your clip to Matrix, here's their answer." But instead, we worry and we fret, and we're dealing with contaminated soil over on the Shedler property, living in fear about our own health. Maybe we should write a proclamation for ourselves and our neighbors, because no one else seems to care about us. We have to stick together. And I think, you know, it reminds me of the Billy Joel song, "It's a Matter of Trust" that goes, "It's hard when you are always afraid, you just recover when another belief is betrayed." And that's how I would sum up our relationship with the village. We have lost trust. We invited you into our homes, we asked for your grace, your mercy. We're dealing with the overdevelopment proposal of that park, which is now contaminated, and we don't know what our future will hold. And to live like that every day, like when your head hits the pillow, I don't know if you're feeling even the slightest bit of what we're feeling. There's a little bit of compassion, Paul said it last week, we're all volunteers here, but your volunteers are making decisions on our behalf that will affect our health and our well-being. I have private well water, and you're talking about putting artificial turf next to private wells that families rely on. We are not just a problem to solve. There's something in the law, and Pam, you might know this, and I don't even know if I'm going to relate it correctly, it's called promissory estoppel. And I'm not a lawyer, but promissory estoppel, there was an ad hoc committee that came up with, I see Matt smiling, was that good? Anyway, I might not be using it the right way, but the gist of it is, the way I understand it, that the village came up with a plan. Everybody was happy with that plan, but it wasn't good enough. It ended up being go big or go home, and it's going to affect us and our health and our safety in that neighborhood. So once again, you may be tired of hearing it, but I'm going to say it every week, because I'm fighting for my neighbors, and I'm fighting for all the people that live in that community because we have lost faith, and we have to stick together, and it's really sad. So I ask you to have mercy and make proper decisions that will affect residents' health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anyone else here in the courtroom want to make a public comment? Okay, seeing no one. Dylan, I don't see anybody with their, oh, there we go. Amy, your hand is raised. You can go ahead and give us your comment.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
We need you louder, much louder.
Can you guys hear me?
Much better. That's good. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, awesome. So hey, everyone, Amy McCambridge, Ridgewood resident. Yeah, I was like, wow, that's pretty awesome that we're talking about Natural Poison Prevention Week, which is like, to me, again, it's so ironic, because in my eyes, like, we're literally the ones poisoning the people through the water, the contaminated soil, the no accountability that, I just, I think it's like a little bit ironic. I talk about environmental agents and even bioterrorism agents. You know, I work directly with Homeland Security, we do training for them with my nonprofit, and I was speaking to my buddies just about this. And, you know, what we do to the water, and what Anne was saying also, like, these are biological agents, and what's getting into the water, which nobody cares about, and nobody's tested for 18 years for those two super fun compounds, nobody has. You know, it's just, I don't know, it's like, it's almost like comical at this point if it wasn't so serious. So that it is available, Poison Help is available 24/7, so like, I encourage every citizen to look into this and call in that your water is poisoned by PFAS, not just from the manufacturers, but by the very people of this village with zero accountability. And, you know, the contaminated soil that we were lied to about, we were told, we were made to feel stupid, and that's how, you know, maybe that wasn't your intent, that's how you made the residents feel. And they were right, it was contaminated. The other big thing, my main question tonight was really before you guys started talking about the poisons, which is everywhere, but Mayor Vagianos, like he said, PFAS is everywhere, so who cares, right? Like, who cares? But, you know, a real leader, like, really should not say that. This stuff should be taken very, very seriously. This is our water, this is people's drinking water. But my main question tonight is, I just wanted to ask Keith or whoever, you know, can clarify this answer, just so I understand, that the berm is the contaminated soil that we were told was not contaminated until a neighbor called in. And that is it. It's just the berm. Matrix came in, and they're going to do the berm. I just want to ask you, if you know of more contamination under that soil, which you guys should know, so I, like, I hope, you know, there's an answer, there should be, or is it just the berm? Or does the contamination go down deeper? Is my big, big question tonight. And I know I'm 40 seconds.
Amy, your time is up.
Yeah.
So wrap it up.
Yep. If you could just let us know if it's just the berm, or is 10 feet down contaminated? Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up. So at this point, does anybody on the dais care to?
We're going to close.
Pardon? Oh, yeah, I'm going to close public comment at this point. And does anybody on the dais have any comments to make, responses?
Nope.
Deputy Mayor, very quickly.
Yes.
To Ms. O'Keefe, with regard to the transparency issue and the publicizing of information specifically to your question about the LOI application, and I don't want to labor this tonight, I think we did that last week, but I just want to call, as a courtesy, your attention to question 45 in the most recent question and answer release that we did dated March 5th. Question 45 directly answers that question with regard to the LOI. And again, we have, as a village, and in conjunction with Matrix, we have been asked and responded to over 150 questions submitted by eight individuals, not all from Ridgewood, to maximize the transparency on this issue. So, I mean, I just can't, I can't stress enough the fact that these very questions that are consistently being asked, and you have every right to ask them at the podium, they're also being answered in writing from the village and posted within those 250 responses that we've already given. To Amy, with regard to PFAS, you know, it's not my job to defend the mayor, but in his absence, I have to take issue with the fact that anyone on this dais ever said, "Who cares about PFAS?" I think very much to the contrary. Prior council and this council are spending $150 million, $150 million to have PFAS to non-detectable levels by the end of next year. So to say that any elected official, past or present, who is involved in this decision-making process, has taken the position of, "Who cares?", I don't think you spend $150 million when you don't care about an issue. And finally, with regard to the berm, Matrix was here last week, they indicated very clearly that their recommendation is going to be for the entire berm to be removed. Chris Piterisi, the LSRP on the project, specifically said that there was not contamination 10 feet down. I think that was very clear and said multiple times during his report to the council. Many of the grids on the, let's say, the flat or level area of the property do not have soil contamination and will not need to be excavated. Some have been confirmed as having exceedances within those grids. They will need to be excavated, and we have eight that are still outstanding, that we have to do further delineation testing to determine whether or not they do or they do not exceed the standards, and we talked about the schedule relative to that last week. That's all I have.
I, go on.
I'm sorry, Keith, one question. And I recall from one of our past meetings that those questions that we've been answering, I think that's cost us between $15,000 and $20,000 in what our consultants have charged us to draft the responses?
Yeah, I mean, that was sort of back-of-the-napkin math that the mayor did.
Right.
At the last meeting, but I can tell you that between the staff time from Matrix, which is hourly, and the staff time here in the village, I think it may be more than that number you just quoted.
And it was really only eight people submitted questions, and you said some of them weren't even Ridgewood residents?
That's correct.
Okay.
I would like to say, with respect to contamination of the soil at Shedler, and with regard to the comment that there's no sense of accountability, you will see on our our agenda tonight, and we will be addressing this, we are spending $1.5 million for the remediation of the soil at Shedler. I think that shows a real commitment. Anybody, anything else on the dais? Okay, let's go on to the village manager's report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First, just a few announcements. I want to bring the public up to speed on the progress with the bus station down at Van Ness Square. We've been working with our signal division and our engineering department. We are scheduled to raise that building within the next few weeks. They're in the process right now of completing the markouts and getting all the necessary demolition permits from the building department. So, within the next few weeks, that will be removed. As we talked about at a prior council meeting, the bus shelter, so to speak, that we have behind this building will temporarily be relocated to Van Ness Square to provide shelter for commuters, and we will be attending an HPC meeting, I think in April with you, Evan, to review some of the permanent bus station options that are available to us. I know Siobhan's done some investigation and research with the city of Boston, so we're going to bring some of that information to HPC and get their feedback before the council...
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, I do want to give credit to Siobhan, since she's not here. She has spearheaded coming up with some of the design proposals, but I'm very much looking forward to us presenting them to the HPC in April to get some feedback from them in terms of what it should really look like long-term there, but I do want to thank her in her absence.
Yep, absolutely. Today, we signed the memorandum of agreement for the white collar contract, so very pleased to report to the council that that process has been completed. We're in the process right now of updating the contract document, and we should be signing a memorandum of agreement with the blue collar union in short order. On Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the IFTAR at the Ridgewood Y. I want to thank everyone who put that event together. It was very welcoming, the room was packed, it was standing room only, and to everyone that is continuing to celebrate Ramadan, I want to wish you a Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak. And finally, I want to announce that we have been named a healthy town for 2025. I want to thank Dawn and our team in the Health Department for all the work that they have put forth in allowing us to receive that state designation, and I know that they are also going to be kicking off the mayor's wellness campaign this year, so we're looking forward to both of those initiatives. Some announcements tonight, the Ridgewood Parks and Recreation Department is still accepting applications for the ultimate summer job in Ridgewood. This evening, downstairs in the youth lounge, they held a job fair, was well-attended, but working a great in the summer as a camp counselor, lifeguard, swim instructor, or member of the badge staff, we encourage everyone who's interested in any of those positions to stop at the stable, submit an application, the application deadline is April 1st. On Thursday, March 27th, from 10:30 to 11:30, the Ridgewood Health Department, along with Valley Hospital, will be hosting Understanding Food Labels with Nicole Fuller, a registered dietitian. This will teach people how to properly read food labels and interpret nutrition facts. Anyone who'd like to register could do so through Community Pass or by calling the Health Department. On Thursday, March 27th, from 6:30 to 8:30, the Ridgewood Public Library will be hosting Real Voices Screening and Discussion, Rebel With A Clause. Grammar guru Ellen Jovan takes her pop-up grammar advice on a road trip across all 50 states to show the comma fights that can bring us closer together in a divided time. You could register at the Ridgewood Library. I don't know why they need Ellen, because we have the deputy mayor, you could have offered this program right next door, Pam.
I've never seen that movie, I really will have to go.
The Ridgewood Arts Council presents Children in the Arts on Sunday, March 30th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the stable. Children, the children featured in this session will share their interests, talent, and involvement in their chosen art form with the audience. Come participate in a unique opportunity to learn, see, and ask questions. All ages are welcome. And lastly, our upcoming village council meetings, March 26th, we have a work session, April 1st, we have a budget meeting, that meeting is at 5:00 p.m. April 5th, we have a work session, April 9th, we have a public meeting, April 23rd, we have a work session. All of the regular meetings start at 7:30, and again, the budget meeting starts at 5:00 p.m. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. Now, we'll go to council updates. Frank?
So, I'm going to piggyback off of what Keith said, because the Ridgewood Arts Council meant. On Monday, there's a flyer that's going around about the children in the arts that he mentioned, and again, that's on Sunday, March 30th, at the stable, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., and it's free to attend, and that way you can just hear directly from kids here in Ridgewood about their involvement in the arts, and it should be really exciting. Also, that the Ridgewood Arts Foundation, separate from the Arts Council, has their annual honors showcase on Friday, April 4th, at 7:30 p.m. This will be held at the Unitarian Society of Ridgewood, and there's going to be live music, an art gallery featuring honored artists, a new note card contest winner, silent auction, and beverages and tasty bites. This is a fundraiser for the Arts Foundation, and you can find out more and sign up for tickets at ridgewoodartsfoundation.org. That's ridgewoodartsfoundation.org. And also participated with Councilman Siobhan Winograd at the council talks this past...
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Council chat.
Yeah.
On Saturday morning, it was great, and we had a handful of residents come in, and you get 15 minutes with two council people, and it's just a great opportunity to talk about whatever's on your mind, and that was my first one, so I enjoyed it.
Good.
And that is all I have.
Okay. Evan?
Yeah, I can be brief, it's only been a week. So, this past Monday, I had a dilemma, I had both HPC, Historical Preservation Committee, and July 4th met. I chose HPC only because I had missed their last meeting, because we had moved one of our council meetings that conflicted with their meeting, but again, just a wonderful group, two, three hours looking at downtown designs, and it's really, 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 really wonderful group of people that I'm really happy that they volunteer for the village. I attended the IFTAR event as well with Keith, most of the council, most of the school board was there, police chief, fire was, fire department heads were there, and a number of other public officials. I've gone, you know, every year for the last few years, it is absolutely one of my favorite events. As I discussed last year, as a, I think somewhat proud and outspoken member of Ridgewood's Jewish community, I especially want to attend, not just because I'm invited, which I think is in itself a real testament to the wonderful Muslim community, but the fact that how welcome I feel there and how welcomed I am when I am there. It's really a special event, it reminds me why I think we're so fortunate to live in a town like Ridgewood. I wish more places were like Ridgewood in this regard, and I really just want to thank the members of the Muslim community who I'm proud, not just to call my neighbors, but I'm also proud to call my friends. And for those of you who are celebrating, as Keith said, Ramadan Mubarak, and it's not my first IFTAR, hopefully it will not be my last, just wonderful people, wonderful food, and just really wonderful town to be a part of. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. I wanted to thank Iman Hamza, who puts it together every year, great guy, wonderful person, really, really, I'm pleased he was able to do that this year again.
I went to the IFTAR dinner also, and I was a little nervous, because at the last council meeting, the mayor invited everybody in the town, and I know that they do a lot of home cooking for this, and luckily, I saw that they had enough food for everyone, and they even had some leftovers. It was a really nice event, so Ramadan Karim, and I really had a good time, too. The, I attended the mayor's first wellness meeting, and it was a good group of people there, and a lot of planning went on, and fun things are in store. Green Ridgewood Met on Thursday night, and we are doing a lot of planning for the Daffodil Festival and Earth Day Fair, which is going to be held on April 27th, between 11:00 and 2:30 in Van Ness Square. That's, we're planning to have a petting zoo and a drummer and a daffy dog parade, so if you have a dog who likes to dress up, this is a good place to compete. And then, the Special Improvement District Steering Committee did make its presentation to the commercial property owners and business owners in Ridgewood. We sent out about 300 invitations, and we, we get, many members of the steering committee spoke about their perspectives and answered questions at the end, and we also asked the participants to fill out some surveys. Our consultant is now analyzing the answers to that, those surveys, he will produce a report, and we will go on to the next steps with the feasibility study. The planning board did not meet last week, so I have nothing to say there. The Central Business District Advisory Committee meets tomorrow via Zoom, the link is on the agenda, and that agenda is posted on the village website. And that's all I have. So, let's go on to the Ridgewood Water Resolutions.
The following resolution, number 25-147, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. It will be read by title only. This is actually both water and general. Authorized temporary water capital budget and temporary general capital budget.
So moved. Second?
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Okay, ordinances for Ridgewood Water. For introduction, we have ordinance 4037.
Have to move it.
Do you...
Oh, no, she has to read it.
You have to read it first.
No, she has to read it, she has to read it, you're right, I'm sorry.
You move the first reading, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, I move the first reading of ordinance 4037.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White.
Yes.
So ordered, will the clerk please read ordinance 4037 by title?
An ordinance to amend, chapter 145 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood fees at section 145-6, enumeration of fees relating to code chapters.
I move that ordinance 4037 be adopted on first reading and that April 9th, 2025, be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Ordinance 4038, I move the first reading of ordinance 4038.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White.
Yes.
So ordered, will the clerk please read ordinance 4038 by title?
An ordinance to amend, chapter 269 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood, entitled Water, at section 269-8, entitled Piping System Compliance Rate of Access.
I move that ordinance 4038 be adopted on first reading and that April 9th, 2025, be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move the first reading of ordinance 4039.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
So ordered, will the clerk please read ordinance 4039 by title?
A bond ordinance providing for various water utility improvements in and by the Village of Ridgewood and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $4,992,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $4,742,000 bonds or notes of the village to finance part of the cost thereof.
I move that ordinance 4039 be adopted on first reading and that April 9th, 2025, be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second it.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move the clerk read ordinance 4032 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
I second it.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Okay, just lost my place. Oh, the hearing is now open.
Now, I will read the title of the ordinance, ordinance appropriating $350,000 from the water capital fund surplus for SCADA and security upgrades at various facilities in and by the Village of Ridgewood and the County of Bergen, New Jersey.
The hearing, the public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I move that the public hearing be closed.
I second it.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4032 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second that motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
The following resolutions, number 25-148 through 25-151, will be adopted by consent agenda with one vote by the village council, they will be read by title only. Award sole source contract, corrosion control at Passaic Valley Water Commission Interconnection. Award contract, leak detection services, intermediate zone. Award contract, HVAC maintenance and repair. Or professional services contract, construction administration, Eastside Main and Mountain PFAS treatment facilities.
So moved. Second?
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move the first reading of ordinance 440.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
So ordered, will the clerk please read ordinance 440 by title?
4040, right?
No, excuse me, 4040.
An ordinance to amend, chapter 156 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood, food and food handling establishments, article 1, general provisions, at section 156-2, definitions.
I move that ordinance 4040 be adopted on first reading and that April 9th, 2025, be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move the first reading of ordinance 4041.
I second it.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
So ordered, will the clerk please read ordinance 4041 by title?
An ordinance to amend, chapter 145 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood fees at section 145-5, general fees.
I move that ordinance 4041 be adopted on first reading and that April 9th, 2025, be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move, before I make this motion, I wanted to let you all know, if you don't have the papers in front of you, that this ordinance, 4042, has to do with the feeding of wildlife in Ridgewood. Right now, the feeding of wildlife is prohibited on public land, but this extends that prohibition to private property because of the health implications. And there is an exception for bird feeders, but in recognizing that feeding wildlife is not good for them and exposes humans to various diseases, we have amended this ordinance. And so now, I will move the first reading of ordinance 4040.
Deputy Mayor, if I may, I just want to, before you introduce the ordinance, I just want to make it clear that I did ask the Health Department to research the height and the state statute that was being proposed, or the bill that was being proposed in Trenton. There is a pending bill, we don't know whether that's going to move or not in the legislature, so Dawn's recommendation, and I support her in this, is to introduce this as-is with the height requirements we discussed after Frank did his research, and then if the state passes the bill, we'll amend the ordinance to reflect the state statute so that we are consistent.
Yes. Okay, I move the first reading of ordinance 4042.
I second it.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I'll read the title, an ordinance to amend, chapter 105 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood, animals at section 105, article 8, wildlife feeding.
Evan?
Oh, sorry, I move that ordinance 4042 be adopted on first reading and that April 9th, 2025, be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
I'd like to first thank the Deputy Mayor and Dawn from the Health Department for all the work that they put into researching this and writing this ordinance, because I think it's really solid and will serve the purpose of helping people that like to feed birds as well as protect our residents, and with that, I say yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Our next ordinance for introduction is 4043. This is the tree protection ordinance. We have made several amendments over the years, and this refinement is making this a more sensitive, realistic, and appropriate ordinance. Therefore, I move the first reading of ordinance 4043.
And I second that.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
So ordered, will the clerk please read ordinance 4043 by title?
An ordinance to rescind and replace in its entirety, chapter 260 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Trees and Shrubs, and previously adopted ordinance number 3682, which amended chapter 260, and to establish a new title for chapter 260, tree protection, removal, and replacement.
I move that ordinance 4043 be adopted on first reading and that April 9th, 2025, be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second that motion.
Mortimer? Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 4044. I move the first reading of ordinance 4040, 4044.
I second it.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
So ordered, will the clerk please read ordinance 4044 by title?
An ordinance to amend chapter 241 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood entitled Skateboards by renaming the chapter Skateboard Scooters and Micro Mobility Vehicles or Devices in the Central Business District and adding definitions and restricted vehicles and devices.
I move that ordinance 4040, 4044 be adopted on first reading and that April 9, 2025 be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move the first reading of ordinance 4045.
I second that motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
So ordered, will the clerk please read ordinance 4045?
A bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the Village of Ridgewood and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $4,92,190 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,887,000 bonds or notes of the Village to finance part of the costs thereof.
I move that ordinance 4045 be adopted on first reading and that April 9, 2025 be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I did want to say that I vote in favor of this ordinance. It is, well, the biggest expense here that we are bonding for is the soil remediation at Shedler that I mentioned earlier. I did have some pause, because what's also being paid for here is the sinking fund for the Shedler Field. However, excuse me, for the Maple Field. And I am voting in favor of that because that, that accumulate, those accumulated funds could be used to either purchase another artificial turf field when the current one needs to be replaced, or it could be used to return to natural grass. So that's why I voted yes. We'll go on to public hearing for ordinance 4043. I move the clerk read ordinance 40, 40.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
I second it.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4033?
An ordinance to amend chapter 265 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Vehicles and Traffic at section 265-58, Schedule 8 through Streets.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I move the public hearing be closed.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4033 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move the clerk read ordinance 4034 by title on second reading, excuse me, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
I second it.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4034?
A bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the Village of Ridgewood and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $2,765,550 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,627,050 bonds or notes of the Village to finance part of the costs thereof.
I move the pu, mm, the public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council, Boyd A. Loving, Ridgewood. Deputy Mayor, in the absence of you making any announcement, I will question whether this ordinance can even be passed tonight, because you only have three of you up there and it's a bond ordinance. Would ask the, it's a public hearing. So you only have three people? It is four people required to bond, so I would ask the attorney to rule as to whether this, what should happen here with this ordinance.
That's a very good point. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'll say it again if you hadn't heard me. I said it's a very good point, and we need...
Is your mic on?
My mic is on right now.
Doesn't seem to be working very well.
So, from a, from a, from a voting standpoint, you can't adopt tonight, but because Heather duly advertised the public hearing and final adoption, you have the ability to table this ordinance.
No, we're going to continue the public hearing.
Just continue the public hearing till next...
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
No.
The ling, the lingo is, is different from municipality to municipality, but you can, you can hold this for adoption until the April meeting.
Right.
But you were required to have the public hearing tonight because it was duly advertised after introduction.
So if anybody wants to comment, they can.
And we just had a comment.
Right.
And so there may be others.
So we can, so we can take comment tonight and just pass it on the night then, right?
Correct.
And assume that doesn't... Pass it on to the next public meeting.
Okay.
But we do not have to start the process over. You just don't vote tonight. You'll hold it over till the April 9th meeting.
Well, nice job, Boyd.
Yep.
Very good. I should have picked it up.
Is there anyone else who wants to comment? No? Okay, so then what you're going to do is move that the hearing be continued until April 9th.
Okay. I move that the hearing on ordinance 4034 be continued to April 9th.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move, move the clerk read ordinance 4035 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
I second.
Okay. Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4035?
An ordinance to amend chapter 265 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Vehicles and Traffic at section 265-33, permit parking, and section 265-42, reserved parking spaces, and section 265-65, Schedule 15, parking prohibited at all times.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I move the public hearing be closed.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4035 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move the clerk read ordinance 4036 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
I second that.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4036?
An ordinance to amend chapter 145 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood fees at section 145-6, enumeration of fees relating to code chapters.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I move the public hearing be closed.
I second.
Mortimer?
Yep.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4036 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Resolutions, the following resolutions, number 25...
Heather, if I may, I'd like to request that the council remove 25-159 from the consent agenda and carry that over to April 9th. That's the purchase of the two sanitation vehicles.
It's 159. Okay. The following resolutions, number 25-152 through 25-178, with the exception of resolution 25-159, will be adopted by consent agenda with one vote by the Village Council. They will be read by title only. Award contract for thermal imaging camera kits, Fire Department. Award sole source contract upgrades to SCADA system water pollution control facility. Award contract under state contract self-contained breathing apparatus scuba, Fire Department. Award contract under Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System, purchase of equipment, service, and licenses for access control and CCTV. Award contract under Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System, new equipment body for Ford F-250 pickup truck. Award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing, Repair, and Resurfacing of Somerville Tennis Courts. Award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing, Repair, and Resurfacing of Glenn Pickleball Courts. Award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing, Leasing, and Maintenance of Police Vehicles. Award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing, Leasing of Vehicle for Health Department. Award professional services contract, professional municipal planning consultant, fourth round housing element and fair share plan. Award professional services contract, special counsel Shedler Property Ship-O application. Award professional services contract, historic preservation consultant Shedler Property Ship-O application. Award professional services contract, engineering and landscape architectural services for concept development Shedler Property Ship-O application. Award professional services contract, historical architectural services, oversight of construction of sanitary sewer lateral from Zabriski Shedler House to sanitary sewer lateral in West Adder River Road. Authorized change order North Walnut Parking Lot, removal of underground fuel storage tanks, approved budget reserve transfers, request permission to anticipate 2025 tax collection rate. Authorized application for and accept grant funding from Bergen County Municipal Alliance Grant. Authorized refund and cancellation of property taxes, block 4704.01, Lot 5. Authorized execution of documents for the removal and remediation of underground fuel storage tanks at North Walnut Street Parking Lot. Accept donation Project Pride, accept donation furniture for Zabriski Shedler House. Declare police vehicle surplus property. Name change for Project Pride to Ridgewood Beautification Team. Appoint members to Central Business District Advisory Committee, and then appoint members to Community Center Advisory Board.
So moved. Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
The following resolution numbered 25-179 will be considered separately and read in full. Whereas, several newspapers in New Jersey have gone to an all-digital format and terminated daily print publications. Whereas, local government officials serve as stewards of property taxpayer dollars and should no longer be required to subsidize the newspaper industry with revenues collected from publishing legal notices in the press. Whereas, long before New Jersey Advanced Media's announcement that it was terminating daily print publications in January of 2025, local government officials found it increasingly difficult to comply with the public notice requirements under the law, as the media has become almost exclusively digitized and struggle to retain staff, resources, and publications. And whereas, legislation that will authorize local governments to publish legal notices on a local government's official website will streamline and antiquated and overly burdensome process and save valuable time, resources, and property taxpayer dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby urge state leaders to adopt legislation that will authorize municipalities, counties, school districts, and all local governments to publish legal notices in a clear, transparent, and timely manner on a local government's official website, and be further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be sent to Governor Phil Murphy, Senate President Nicholas Scutari, Speaker of the General Assembly Craig Coughlin, Senator Kristen Carrato, Assembly Members Al Barlis, Christopher DeHillips, and the New Jersey State League of Municipalities. Have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mortimer?
So as much as I personally wish that newspapers still existed, and the same with books, everything is moved digital, so for the, the sake of what will best benefit our residents, I'm going to vote yes.
Perrin?
I think a robust, independent media, newspapers in particular, have been the mark of our democracy for the last 200-plus years. I am not interested in hastening their demise, although I recognize technological changes have, have changed the, the whole environment, but I am not in favor of this resolution, so I vote no.
And White.
It's more transparent, and it saves us money, so I am a yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll go now to comments from the public, not to exceed three minutes.
Good evening again, Deputy Mayor and Council, and just, if somebody could just tell me whether that ordinance passed or did not pass, I believe, because the major, you had a quorum, and the majority of the quorum approved that it passed. Is that correct, Heather?
The bond ordinance, I'm sorry.
No, the...
Newspaper.
The newspaper was a resolution, actually, but yes, it did pass.
Okay, thank you so much. There were a couple of resolutions on the agenda tonight dealing with the North Walnut Street Parking Lot in terms of the remediation. I had commented before on this, and the manager was kind enough to give some information out about how this was a fully funded operate, a fully funded project. It had been funded several years ago, but we're now getting around to doing it. I still have concerns, however, about the cost, and the manager also commented, what, last week or the week before last, that the clerk's office had found some insurance policies, and the insurance policies were written or enforced at a time when environmental was not excluded. So I'm just wondering where we are in an attempt to find some other monies to pay for this besides taxpayers' dollars. Maybe a few years ago, there was also a comment made that we would be chasing after the insurance companies of the Texaco stations and any other gas stations, so I'm just wondering where we are in terms of trying to get some money from other sources, whether it was from our own insurance policies, or whether from the previous owners of the property. I know that in terms of the $120 that is being paid for by the previous owner, but I'm talking specifically about the property that was ours and it was the site of the former gas stations. Can we do anything about recouping some money from some of the insurance companies or from another source, a legal action of some sort? The other comment I'd like to make tonight is that there was a front page story in the